We're ready. I hereby reconvene the August 27, 2013, meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:00 PM. Good evening. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate. Board, it is truly my pleasure at the moment to bring up our science specialist, Ms. Jackie Ballas, to give us a presentation.
Nice to be here, Mr. Crawford and school board members. I'm happy to be here to start the school off in a wonderful way by recognizing one of our outstanding students. I want to introduce to you Jacob Mosley. He is right now a ninth grader at Vanguard High School in our IB program. He's weathered his first week of IB, so he's doing very well. And Jacob has had a special honor bestowed on him, and he is one of our science fair superstars, I like to call him. He was nominated recently as a semifinalist for the Broadcom Masters Program. And this is a branch of the International Science Fair, but it's for middle school students. So when he was an eighth grader at Osceola, he was awarded this honor, and we were very excited. Now, to get to this point, I wanted to tell you just a little bit about the Broadcom Masters, so you'll understand how really prestigious this is. They are a foundation that was founded to inspire and enable young people throughout the world to pursue careers in science, engineering, technology, and mathematics. And they do that by sponsoring this competition, and it's called the Broadcom Masters, and it's a branch of the science and society in the public, which sponsors our science fairs. And they actually have to submit, he took his science fair project that he won second place last year at state, which was quite an honor in itself, and he took that project and then he had to submit it with an essay and a written report, and had to do a lot of extra research and time over the summer, and present that project for a competition in the Broadcom Masters. And he was able to do that because he received first place at our regional fair. And so we've only had just very few Broadcom students who even do this extra work, and we've had very few winners. But Jacob was a semifinalist in sixth grade, and he was a finalist again at eighth grade. And we are kind of awaiting to see if he gets to be a finalist, and that would be wonderful, but it's very, very rare. There's only thirty finalists in the whole United States, and other countries. So it's a very, very prestigious. There were three hundred that they picked from all of their applicants, and he was one of that top three hundred in the nation and basically in the world through the presentation of his chemistry project. And in his chemistry project, he had actually designed cutting-edge, state-of-the-art chemistry techniques on his own. So not following any recipe, not following any book, not anything. He came up with it in his own head. So I'm very, very proud to introduce Jacob Mosley, and he's going to do the inspiration and pledge for us tonight. It's a great way to start the school year.
I would like to share the following quote by Nikos Kassantzakis from his novel Zorba the Greek. True teachers are those who use themselves as bridges over which they invite their students to cross, then, having facilitated their crossing, joyful collapse, encouraging them to create their own. I believe that I speak for everyone when I say that I am incredibly thankful to all of our wonderful teachers for building us all bridges towards a better future. Thank you. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know we wish Jacob good luck. He and his sister Cassandra were one of the only in the last ten years that I've been doing science fair, they were the only two students during my time doing that that achieved first place at state, not doing the project together, but separate projects. And so this year, he's already worked on his project over the summer, and so I'm expecting great things from him, and I hope I'll bring him back.
Could you tell us in lay terms what is one of the chemistry techniques that you had as part of your project that we would understand?
Yeah. I was testing the antioxidant potency of different natural substances, which are chemicals that are used in the body to help fight dangerous chemicals that create cancer and those sorts of things. And so I used a chemical reaction that when you mix it together, it would actually change colors. And based on the times and frequency of the color changes, I could determine the amount of antioxidants that were inside the plants that I used. So that's what I did.
Thank you. Sounds amazing. Sounds amazing.
Aren't we lucky?
Maybe you'll be curing cancer worldwide eventually someday. Thank you.
Jacob? I'm looking forward to it.
I just want to commend you for what you're doing, and I want you to remember, you're thinking of the unthinkable, and you're doing the impossible. And as a young person your age, and all the things that you could be doing, I'm proud as a school board member and part of this to know that you're doing something that we will be hearing about in our future.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you, Mr. James, so much. Thank you. We're also proud of you.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the agenda for the August 27, 2013, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I believe it's going to pass five-zero. All right, it did pass five-zero. May I motion to approve the minutes for the July 30, 2013, special school board meeting?
So move.
Second.
All right, we'll go with that. Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion should pass five-zero. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to bring up the Fund Development Director from the Public Education Foundation, and she is going to introduce a new business partner, I believe.
Thank you. It's wonderful being here tonight. And I've got Mr. John Servalera, our board president, who is also with me. I just wanted to start by saying, our business partner program is a longstanding program that we've had at the foundation. The whole goal is that we reach out to those in our community and partner them with schools in the school district so that they can establish a strong bond, and hopefully over time, they can cultivate that relationship in order to bring benefit to the schools in the school district. We've had some longstanding business partners, and it's our goal, the foundation, to help encourage that relationship to carry on, and in most cases, they do. In some cases, we're fortunate enough, like tonight, we have a brand-new business partner for Hammett Bowen Elementary, and I would like to ask John Servalera to come up and or come forward and do the presentation for the business partner presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Lauren. It's a great day here at the school board, isn't it? When you bring a business partner into our fold and into our schools, and with Hammett Bowen needing a business partner, they reached out, and we have a new business partner tonight. And I would like to ask Mrs. Dixon to come on up. She's the principal there at Hammett Bowen Elementary. And also, her partner, Dr. Barkhousen, and I hope I said that right, from Inline Orthodontics. Okay, very good, wonderful. It's a pleasure having you as a business partner for our school, and we have a little token of our appreciation for that.
Thank you.
And with that, on behalf of the Public Education Foundation, we'd like to recognize you tonight for your partnership.
Thank you.
And also, this will be displayed at the school there, so this is for you as well.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Dixon, would you like to say a few words?
Of course.
All right, wonderful.
Mr. Crawford, board members, thank you so much for having us tonight. It's been several years since we had a business partner, and Dr. Barkhousen was actually at school last year addressing our third graders about dental health, and I think my secretary, who was at the time, said, "Have you ever thought about being a business partner?" Secretaries are wonderful people to have. And it just kind of blossomed from there, and we got to talking, and her interest in being a partner was as great as our interest was, and we're delighted because she's part of our little southwest community. Her office is not far from the school, and she does a lot with pediatric orthodontics, and I have a lot of children that can use her services. So we're really delighted to welcome Dr. Barkhousen to the Hammett Bowen family.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity.
Board, may I have a motion to adopt the District Energy Management Procedure Manual?
So move.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, the District Emergency Management Procedure Manual is updated annually and is used to provide the district with accurate and consistent procedures for handling disasters and emergencies that occur.
It's my republic hearing, is there anyone who wishes to address the manual? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Board members? Seeing none?
Of course.
All right, sir, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And a motion should pass five-zero. Okay, and it does pass five-zero. May I have a motion to adopt the revised job classification description for assistant principal? Motion and second, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent.
The job classification description for assistant principal has been revised to more accurately reflect the number of days worked, the appropriate placement on the salary schedule, and to provide additional information in order to make all job descriptions consistent.
Declare a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to address the board on this revised job classification? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Board members? None, we'll move to the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised job classification description for Coordinator One Curriculum and Instruction? Motion and second, please.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent.
The job classification description for Coordinator One Curriculum and Instruction has been revised to change the title areas to conform to the staffing plan and to provide additional information in order to be consistent with all job descriptions.
Declare a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to address the revised job classification? Seeing none, all those, or bring it back to the board, board members? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised job classification description for Executive Director of Human Resources?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
The job classification description for Executive Director of Human Resources has been revised in order to update who the person in this position reports to, those who are supervised by the person in this position, and to provide additional information in order to be consistent with all job descriptions.
Declare a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to address the board on this revised job classification? Seeing none, bring it back to the board, board members?
Right.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised job classification description for Executive Director for Support Services? Need a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. Superintendent.
The job classification description for Executive Director of Support Services includes changing the job title to Director of Facilities to more accurately reflect the position, update the job duties and responsibilities of the position, those who are supervised by the person in this position, placement on the salary schedule, and provide additional information in order to be consistent with all job descriptions.
Declare a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to address the board on this revised job description? Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
I would just please with the rewrites. It's very deep.
Anyone else?
All requests.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted? Motion and second, please.
So move.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes five-zero. And the motion does pass five-to-zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? $1,000 to Bellevue High School from Skills USA, $3,000 to Bellevue Middle School from Bellevue Middle School PTO, $5,000 to the Lake Ware High School from the Robert Bonnet Archaeology Conit, I cannot say that tonight, Oniconnity Institute, $5,000 to Marion County School Operations Stuff the Bus from Stephen J. Earnhardt, $1,000 to Shady Hill Elementary School from Ocala IPA. I need a motion and second.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion does pass five-to-zero. As soon as I vote. All right, there we go. I'm going to ask Ms. Ely if you would thank the community for tonight.
Sure, I was just totally, this up, $15,000 of donations for this month to Bellevue High, Bellevue Middle, Lake Ware High, Stuff the Bus, and Shady Hill. Thank you so much, business people and individual parents, and we just appreciate and need your help, and we know that you're there for us, but thank you again.
Thank you. Board, a few quick meeting reminders. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, September 5, 2013, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to continue review of the fiscal year 2013-14 budget, results of the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, construction projects, charter school applications, and to receive the board direction for the fiscal year 2014-2015 general insurance. All right. This evening, I think we'll start with Ms. Boynton on any concerns, comments she may have.
Well, I just want to welcome back all the staff, the teachers, and of course, the students. And knowing that it's, you know, it wasn't as hard as we thought it would be this year, and I know that the staff has really, really took the time to make sure and ensure that the parents and the students, even though they feel a little twins of the budget, that they're really doing a good job in making sure that all the students are at ease about it, and making sure that things have been running so smooth in so many schools. I've had some pretty good reports along the way of how smooth it has been running, and I want to take the teachers, take the time to thank the teachers and the staff at every school for making it work. Thank you so much.
Ms. Ely.
I wanted to promote a volunteer program called Reading Pals. It's put on by United Way. This is the second year that we're in operation, and I was a volunteer last year. We go into kindergarten classrooms, we call them academies. There are fifteen schools that have kindergarten academies. The children in those academies are lower-performing students and need the extra help, and as volunteers, we're trained by United Way to go in to, this year, we're going in twice a week to work with these children one-on-one. The grant allows each child to go home with a book every week, so they get twenty-five books at the end of the, they get them each week, but they get a total of twenty-five books. And I've just felt very, very honored to be part of the volunteer program. I know they're needing more volunteers. If you can't do it twice a week, do it once a week, and you get a sub to work with you. We are in desperate need of men volunteers especially. If you know anybody retired or would like to take some time off during the day to help these kids, it will be very beneficial, and they will love you. The kids love you unconditionally. When you walk in the door, they come at you and hug you. I did want to say that I gave several people this graph. I gave the school board the graph of the fifteen schools that were selected to be part of this grant, and it's hard to see it, but we did some fair testing, which is something the state does with all of our children at the beginning of the year to see where these children were, and then at the end of the year. And phenomenal growth in every one of the fifteen schools, but what impressed me more than anything was the overall kindergarten academy average, which those fifteen schools was higher than the district kindergarten average. So it is definitely working, and I would encourage you to call the United Way office if you think you might be able to volunteer or have a friend and you volunteer together. But I'm going to close with what's on the bookmark by Dr. Seuss. It says, "The more that you read, the more things you will know, the more you learn, the more places you go." And that's from Dr. Seuss. So if you can help or know anybody who can help, please send them to the United Way office. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Stacy.
Well, of course, I'm on my normal topic. We've got to get our teachers employed, and I'm hearing from administrators that I'm not positive enough. Someone will share some things I'm positive about tonight. I'm positive that Common Core is in big trouble. If they're having to have an all-out full-court press to try to make it work in Florida, it looks like it's in big trouble. I've been following the three-day symposium over in Tampa, and it's been quite interesting. It's in big trouble. And I'd like to also share something positive about NH Jones. NH Jones, I didn't even realize it was ranked third in the state academically. It's a secret that's well-kept. I really don't, I guess if we publicize very much about it, maybe too many people want to go there, but it's a great school, and I just really put it all together that we were actually ranked third in the state. I thought, I don't know what I thought it was, maybe third in our region or something, but the school's doing great, and the staff over there should be commended. I'm also positive, Mr. James, we talked about bloated budgets, and you shared with me that I shouldn't share that we're hiding money. I'm not sure that we're hiding money, maybe we're just not managing, but I showed you two large bloated budgets on Thursday where Mr. Crawford and I picked up half a million dollars in two of them that were a bit bloated, that might be available to pay my teachers. I'm positive that this five-year practice of gutting our system and cutting the only ones that reach our students is a gig that the taxpayers are really pretty tired of. I think that the fact that they didn't give us money on our last referendum tells me that they really are tired of being bullied. Every single time the school system wants money, the first thing we cut are the teachers, the art teachers, the music teachers, the band, and the coaches. We talk, I always hear here about, oh, best practices for this and best practices. The best business practice, you do not ever go out and try to tell your customers, you got to have more money, and you fire the people who can help you improve your product, and then insist that the people give you more money. There's just no business that operates like that. No restaurant, no business keeps the delivery people and fires the cooks. The only people that we've taken money from in this district are the geese who lay the golden eggs for us. The taxpayers aren't going to give us any more money until we prove to the taxpayers that we can raise test scores. The morale is so low in our district that we can't raise test scores because the teachers are just not motivated, because they never know which shoe, they're waiting for another shoe to drop at all times. It reminds me of Washington, DC. You know, it's been unfortunate over the summer. What's the first thing the federal government does to punish us for not letting them have more money? They close the White House to children's visits, and they close the parks. Kind of reminds me of what we did here. We shut down the sports programs, and we cheat our teachers so that we can pay other people who never even have any student contact more money. I'm positive that no one in the finance department or staff development has showed me yet where the federal government requires that we pay an additional 25% on top of what the federal government gives us for staff development. The federal government gives us approximately eight million, and I've heard that, oh, we are going to, the sky's going to fall if we don't, we can't supplant, we have to supplement. Well, there was a time when we were adding $3.6 million a few years ago, and then it dropped to 2.7, and gee, that's quite a few hundred thousand dollars, and I don't know that we got a letter that the federal government was going to quit funding us when we quit paying that much, but I think with ten and a half million dollar staff development budget, we should be able to find 10% of that to use for something else. I also want to be positive to let you know that I am positive that the teacher's salary is factored in the DCD formula, that we acquire our cost of living part piece to our FTE funding. If we are showing that our classroom, it costs us, if we're paying, 2% of our teachers have pay, and our classroom cost is lower, and you factor that all into educate a child, that's going to affect our part of our DCD formula when they are coming up with the FTE. That formula follows us over an average of three years, and that's going to affect that. So now for the good news. I am positive that I heard Mr. Tomlin say Thursday, that if this board charges him with funding our teachers, he can do so, but he did let me know he wouldn't find it out of staff development. Okay, board members, it's time for the rubber to hit the road. A child's education is much like a rainbow. It comes and goes quickly. Mr. James, we don't have time to wait on another administration's plan to unfold, because, Mr. James, that rainbow is ending this year for students who are graduating. They can't wait for the latest, newest experiment to work. They're going to be graduating. These are public schools, Mr. James, not laboratories for experimental activity. We have seniors who have been involved in their school clubs for three years already, and now they may fold. I am begging my former, my fellow board members to take Mr. Tomlin up on his offer, if we can gain consensus, that he would find the funding needed to fund our teachers properly and pay them properly, and get the moral morale back up in our schools before that short window of opportunity ends for so many, and their rainbow is gone forever. Mr. Tomlin and this board, if you will help me do this, I promise I will fight as hard next year in a referendum to help this school district bring in more money, because I will be convinced then that you have done absolutely everything possible to rein in spending, and that you did not do it off the backs of our students or the backs of our teachers. I don't know how the board members feel, but I will work hard to help us fund our schools next year, and I'm doing everything I can right now, working with some sales tax oppo- And I'm doing everything I can right now, working with some sales tax opportunities. So, Mr. Crawford, how does everyone feel about it? Mr. Tomlin suggested that he possibly could find the funding and he would look hard. Is that offer still on the table, Mr. Tomlin? If the board gave you consensus that you could help us fund our teachers?
We have continued to look hard in our budget and spent a lot of time on that. We will continue to work with you as you examine the tentative budget at our next work session.
Well, could I ask the board if they would join me and ask Mr. Tomlin to please do everything possible, even if we put a freezing, a spending freeze on everything, that he could fund our teachers, get the morale back up into our schools, get the teachers back being paid like they should be instead of robbing from Peter, the teachers, to play Paul, everybody else who's not in contact with students. It's just amazing to me that as a business person, that we would cut, that we would go after the very people, that we would, that we would put the top priority employees in the budget last instead of first. How does everyone feel?
Ms. Stacy. I agree with most of what you said. I think we're going to find, we are going to split on raising taxes because I just don't think the public is for that. But even if, even if, I don't know what the qualification be for us to have our house in order, but I...
I think we can. I think if we do this, I think we can.
If it gets on the ballot in 2014, we'll end up finding out. But to that point, I also encourage the superintendent to bring ideas, ideas, ideas to the, to the table. I encourage all the board members. I actually have a plan that we can fund the 92 up to a, what would be an equivalent pay level per day of what we are currently paying a first-year teacher with a bachelor's degree. Plus, you know, don't forget, we're going to possibly need some additional persons to meet the needs of class size. I've got some, there's some money for, in there for meeting that too. I'll have it at our next, our next work session. But I bring every, I encourage everybody to bring their ideas. But I agree with you on one point. One area that I do not think is off limits, which I think that there is money that we can, we can use, is in staff development. I agree with you. Common Core is dying a faster death than I thought it would. State of Oklahoma is now moving in, in that direction. I think it's going to end up being a flood shortly. But I have my own concerns with, with the Common Core. Great concept. I mean, really, putting everybody on the same level of all 50, 50 states. What I'm concerned about is we have an additional involvement of the federal government in education and I can't find anywhere in the Constitution where it says the federal government should be in education. Education has traditionally been a state and local issue. And we've seen, there are two attempts so far to try to mandate public education in this country. Two of the worst pieces of legislation, in my opinion, that's ever been put on the, on the books, which was No Child Left Behind and Race the Top. Both of them was just, we're throwing money with no accountability. Because anytime that you can set up accountability and then you can sit there and go, well, okay, but you get a waiver. Well, either A, you are accountable, or no, you're not accountable, okay? So that's what they've tried to do on it. But I heard everybody, you know, ask questions. Ms. Ellis is usually just a, an email away or a phone call and I know I sent her...
And I picked up a great printout. I'd like for her to provide this to everyone.
I believe she did.
She did.
Yeah, she sent it out to everybody. In fact, even the revised copy.
I think it's great where she added the extras on for me. I requested that yet, you know, as we're, she and I have been talking about this for a couple of weeks. I really like this and maybe it'll help us all to go through it and see where maybe we can, can fund our teachers. And like you said, Mr. Crawford, you have some possibility. But I can tell you one thing. If we can get our teachers funded, and it would be a real bonus if we could also pay our, our coaches because that's probably the cheapest dropout prevention program we have in our school system. And our club leaders who already work for, they started out working for $5 and, for $3 to $5 an hour, now they're working for $1.50 to $3.50 an hour because I know how much they make and I know how many hours they work because my husband did it for a number of years as a volunteer. But I just feel like we've got to, there's so many areas that I feel like we still, we can still look at. And this piece of paper that Mrs. Boston Ellis gave us, I think it's going to be real helpful. And if, Mr. Tomlin, I promise you, if you can help me figure out a way to get all the teachers paid the way they should be paid, I will work as hard for this tax increase as I have worked against them in the past. Okay?
Ms. Stacy, let me offer a thought to you. Okay? On this spending freeze, my only question would be the serious impact on everybody, not just, not just the teachers, but on students. But as looking at certified teachers, what if we, what if we could look in the budget and actually find a way to find some funds to give them the insurance benefit, which may be a little bit easier because then they would have a benefit. What about that for the certified?
Well, first of all...
If we can look at that first.
My plan also takes that into account.
Well, okay, well, I appreciate, I appreciate it and I, and I thank you for your time. And these are teachers. We call them certified subs. I guess we could have called them zebras and staffed them as zebras. They are teachers. They do what a teacher does. They are a teacher.
I understand that. That's what I'm saying, you know, I respect them, finally.
Yeah, okay, let's not get down the road of what we're going, we'll be here all night. Mr. James.
Okay, I just want to, I don't want to chase a lot of that stuff. One of the things I just wanted to really just say, I want to thank Teresa for the job that she do over there, feeling all these questions and her staff. And I know that she worked really hard to try and get us information. And I, and I also like to, again, remind the board that we have a work session on September the 5th. And this is where we can sit down and really look at all these things that people present to us. You know, I was looking at the young lady that was standing there and thinking that the rest of the board members don't recognize the, what is occurring in the school district. And I feel kind of taken back because most people that have ever worked with me know that I'm for our employees. I do know that the teachers have a lot of autonomy when they close the door to their rooms. And we have to have staff development to know what will be coming out, what they will be doing back there. I understand all of these things. So when we, when we get a chance to go through our budget for the final time on September 5th, then we can sit here and look at what we can and cannot do. The big concern I have sometimes is when we sit here and we talk about money and we have, we have our teachers as our primary thing, but it's so many of the other people that make it so, make it possible for teachers to have that security and the things that's in their room. So when we have a chance to come to a work session, we have a chance to vet all of these things. And when I say that there's money out there, I assume based on what we are talking about is our staff is working hard to do that. I assume all of our board members are working hard to do that. But then it, then we have a chance to have a give and take because you're only, people are only hearing one side of it. You know, if a person say, I don't want a coach to get his salary, where have they been all their life? Because that's not true. But the people that don't know me, I said, I did, well, Bobby James is out there against the teachers, the coaches and all of that, and they didn't turn my email. And anybody that have ever looked at my track record know that I am for the students, the teachers, one teacher, one classroom, one school, one community. I don't want to get out here and be running all over the place where we need to sit down and put this stuff out in front of us and go through it and not sit here and say, well, I'll do this and I'll do that. And then you got people out here that's thinking, God, what the rest of these guys are doing? Because I've been around these people up here a long time and what we need to do as a board is try and work together with our staff and take advantage of this. If I'm not mistaken, all of us said that we wanted an additional work session, a budget work session, so we could go over these things.
Right.
Okay, then I come right back here, I'm hearing things that I, I say, guys, we're going to give the staff a chance to say we can do that or we can't do that and then we'll have a list to do that. This is what I'm referring to. And I, this is why I would like for us as a board to really take a leadership role, but let's don't shoot from the hip. Let's sit down there and take a good aim at what we're trying to do. All the things that are being promised up here, let's make sure we work these things out so that, so we won't have another disappointment. Put a period there. I want to talk about something that's very important to this community. Mac Dunwoody. I know Georgie was at his funeral. Mac Dunwoody, for the people that don't know, was superintendent here for a long period of time, well, back in the day. But he made a significant contribution to our school system. And I would like to let all the community, let the community know that the school board recognized the tremendous impact he had on this school system. When he came into office and the things that he did, we thought we had some town hall meetings, but during his era, he had some town hall meetings. I couldn't imagine someone walking in to a group of people and say, we're going to shut Howard High School down because this is what we need to do. Can you just imagine the type of turnover? George, you probably was around when that happened. So we want to come, we want to take a few moments as a board. And I would like for us to, to say to the community out there that we recognize and understand the importance of what occurred and how this system was two and it brought it into one. And this is a part of what we're talking about. This is a part of the history of the Marion County Public School. And it took a change from a dual system to one system. And I think this should be noted. And I will tell you this, when me get ready to name things, I will bring it to the board because this thing is history. And if we try to step sidestep it by saying we need some money for this, we need some money for that, I know people that are out there that's willing to do whatever is necessary for this school board to recognize that this was a point where we became one school system. I just want you guys to know that. I know we have something on September the 10th. I want to address that at that particular point. Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Thank you. Ms. Morris. Madam Secretary?
Okay.
Ms. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I'll, again, emphasize what has already been said here by many of you, that our September the 5th board work session on our budget is very, very important. And I'm saying this on behalf of Teresa Boston Ellis and her department because we cannot wait to have discussion and actual decision-making. We have to make a final decision on September 10th. We can't wait till that last moment because we must have passed a balanced budget that night. That is your charge and that budget will be submitted to the state. So on behalf of Teresa Boston Ellis, I'll remind everyone of that. Another comment in reference to Ms. Stacy's comments about a tax referendum, I have, I don't know, maybe perhaps I misinterpreted what you're saying, but I have not gone on record of saying that I would support a tax referendum of any sort. I know that this, that is a responsibility of this board and should we get to that point, we will work on the appropriate way to go about doing that. Some other comments that I would like to say, kudos to our K-12 academic services. This past summer, the Marion County Public Schools during Summer Algebra I Boot Camp, our Algebra I students had retakes for that Algebra I test. Our retakes and the end-of-course exams were absolutely off the charts as far as the state is concerned. We exceeded what all other counties had, had accomplished. DOE has asked us to explain the program that we use to train our teachers that in turn created the summer boot camp for those students. So we're certainly cooperating and we will probably see that plan duplicated throughout the state. We talk about good news all the time and our public relations person, Kevin Christiansen, I note the other day about what went right. And I don't know whether you received that or not, but if you did not receive it, I'm certainly going to forward it to you because with all the various variables that we have in Marion County, we have an awful lot that went right on our first day of school and our first week of school. Along with that, I can share with you that our enrollment figures are approaching our projections. We're about 300 under projection right now. Mr. Langford and his staff are just about in frantic mode to decide how to move units around and to balance class loads. And our principals, of course, are doing the same also. And then a final note, again, kudos to our summer school programs. This past summer, middle school students, this is middle school students, received a total of 203 and a half units that either enabled them to be promoted to the next grade, but more importantly, be promoted from the eighth grade to the ninth grade. And then high school credits generated through that summer program were in the number of 225, which enabled some of our students to, again, to graduate or to be online for graduation. So excellent program and the teachers that ran those programs. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Board, since it's been brought up about a, by a couple of our speakers this evening about a tax referendum, I don't remember whether I sent you all a copy of the last ones that were on, on the ballot. If not, I'll have Ms. Flockhead or send you out a copy of it. I would request that if you are thinking in that direction, please review those and suggest any changes that you would, that you would like and that you would feel more comfortable with. Do remember, we're limited to 75 words. So you, it's, you can't put Gone with the Wind on there, okay? It's, you are, are limited, but I will, Ms. Flockhead, could you take care of that for me?
Thank you.
And that way, if we, board chooses to have a discussion about that, please bring those, those with you and maybe find something that everybody can feel, you know, feel comfortable with, so.
One more positive thing. I was going to try to come in and do your positive thing and just be thankful for the community eligibility option that affords all students free lunch. And I think that's a real positive thing here that's going on in our community this year. Just, that's a positive.
For elementary only.
Yeah, well, but it's for elementary. When I was reading, I had the list and I didn't go all the way down. But as I read that, I thought, this is a wonderful thing for our, no matter what area in this county, the students are and the parents are really reaping a positive reward.
You know, both, to that point, both Ms. Zeeley and myself were down at the opening of Legacy the other day and they were doing the breakfast in the morning for the children. And if you ever want to bring a smile to your face, it was seeing them on, on that first day when they were coming in and the staff there were saying, okay, now you get to choose something from here and then you get to have a choice of either one of these two items and you get a milk. And just the, the look on their face, the, I mean, they were just absolutely going... This, the ones that were in there when I was, was there were the ones that were starting kindergarten. And so this is the first time that they had ever really had a chance to make a decision like this. And it was just, it was just, I, I just, I just, yeah, I just was just sitting there smiling. It was just, and watching these, these young children.
About memories, right?
Pardon? Well, you know, it, I don't want to go back that far. But, but, but I just remember, you know, it does bring you back to your first day of school. And I know the Publix I shop at, there's some of the children that are just starting college this year. And so I've been, you know, asking them and remembering my first day when I was, was in college, so. But the look on their faces will be a memory that will never leave me.
And I'm sure there were little girls that were helping those who were having a problem making those decisions. They could do it for them.
Actually, we, but we had some very forceful boys that, that were, no, I'm going to make the, so it was, it was a, it was a very interesting morning. And I want to thank all of the parents that walked their children to school that first day. It was a, it, I know it gave both Ms. Zeeley and myself a chance to talk to a lot of them as they were, they were coming up. It's a lot of children that are right around that school that are walking. Young parents, we did have some grandmothers that were, obviously the parents were at work. Grandma was, was bringing the child to school, but it was, you know, there was a look of happiness and fear on the children's faces, you know, the first day like that. But the parents were very appreciative that, that everybody seemed to be there wanting to do the best by their children, give them an education. So I want to thank everybody at that school. It was a wonderful, wonderful, with all the problems of a first-day school...
It was a wonderful, wonderful, with all the problems of a first-day school, it ran like an absolute top.
And I think that's what's so neat about education. It doesn't really matter what your political views are, where you are in life. The neat thing about the school, and I've been involved in the school, is everyone, regardless of who you are, wants the best education for your child. That's something that we all have in common with one another. And I know, Mr. Crawford, you have followed my children through the years, and, you know-
From here to here.
And he was always so interested in what was going, and so he has a large family of children. He's got my kids.
There's a few floating around.
Yeah, he's got a lot floating around.
You know, I'll tell you, if you're ever having a bad day, just go visit one of our schools.
Yeah.
And just see the kid, whether they're elementary or whether they're seniors in high school, about ready to get out the door. It's just the look on their face. It renews your faith in mankind, and so, I don't know, maybe I go on too much about this, but I really get excited about, about doing this job and doing what we're trying to do for the next generation.
And I thank you for all the leadership you have provided me on the board, because you have been very helpful guiding me along. I appreciate, you would have been a good teacher, as a matter of fact. Maybe you missed your real calling.
I'm not an attorney, I told them.
Or an attorney, yeah.
I just, just doing my job. That's just doing my job.
We appreciate you.
Anybody else, Ms. Superintendent, ladies? Okay. Wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placement list for the students through July 1st, 2013. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? And we don't have any, do we, Mrs.? All right. So what, I guess we knew, haven't gotten rid of anybody yet. Therefore, board members, I need a, I hate to say it that way, but it's, you know, you just have to, you know.
Don't be names.
I know, you know. The one that, it's just, you know, the ones that just absolutely, just absolutely slay me are the ones that do something on the very last day of school that causes them to meet the level of being expelled. And I'm trying to think of, oh, my gosh, you could not make it to 3:00 in the afternoon, you know, so. All right, I need a motion to adjourn. Still moved? Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Ely. All those in favor, please say aye.
All right.
All opposed? I see none. That motion is passing 5-0, and we will stand adjourned at 6:51.